Madam Chair, Councilmembers and Participants, we are now live.
Thank you so very much. Good morning, everyone. Before we begin the public hearing, I will make the following announcement. Due to the continuing threat to public health from COVID-19, City Council Committees are currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make these remote hearings possible. Instructions for how the public may view and offer public testimony at public hearings of council committees are included in the public hearing notices that are published in the Daily News, Inquirer, and Legal Intelligencer prior to the hearings, and can also be found on PHLCouncil.com. I now note that the hour has come. Mr. McDermott, will you please call the roll to take attendance? Members that are in attendance will please indicate that you are present when your name is called. Also, please say a few brief words when responding so that your image will be displayed on screen when you speak.
Councilmember Bass?
Good morning, Madam Chair and colleagues. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilmember Brooks?
Good morning, Madam Chair and colleagues. I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilmember Dom? Councilmember Gautier? Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, colleagues. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilmember Green?
Morning, Madam Chair and colleagues. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilmember Jim?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, colleagues. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilmember Johnson?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilmember Jones?
Good morning, Madam Chair and colleagues. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilmember O?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, colleagues. I'm present as well.
Good morning.
Councilmember Quinones Sanchez?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, colleagues. I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilmember Squilla?
Good morning, Madam Chair and colleagues. I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilmember Thomas? And Councilmember Parker?
Good morning, everyone. A quorum of the committee is present, and this hearing is now called to order. This is the continued public hearing of the Committee of the Whole regarding Bill Numbers 200012, 220240, 220284, 220285, 220286, 220287, 220288, 220410, 220411, 220412, 220413, 220421, 220444, 220455, 220485, 220497, 220499, and 220531, and Resolution Numbers 220300, 220544, and 220545. Before I ask Mr. McDermott to read the titles of the bills and resolutions, Councilmember Dom, are you connected? Okay, Mr. McDermott, after you read the titles, I'll try to acknowledge Councilmember Dom. He needed to make a formal request on the record.
Okay. Bill Number 20012, Amending Section 191301 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Homestead Exclusion to Increase the Amount of the Homestead Exclusion Under Certain Terms and Conditions. Bill Number 220240, An Ordnance Substantially Increasing the Budget and Number of Areas and Neighborhoods Around the City Served by the Community Life Improvement Program to Improve the Health, Safety, and Cleanliness of Every Neighborhood and Enhance Quality of Life for All Residents. Bill Number 220284, An Ordnance to Adopt a Capital Budget for the Capital Program for the Fiscal Years 2023 to 2028 Inclusive. Bill Number 220285, An Ordnance to Adopt a Fiscal 2023 Capital Budget. Bill Number 220286, An Ordnance Adopting the Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2023. Bill Number 220287, An Ordnance Amending Section 101,001 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fees of Commissioners of Records to Increase Certain Fees for the Recording of Deeds and Mortgages and Related Documents Under Certain Terms and Conditions. Bill Number 220288, An Ordnance Amending Section 191403 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Imposition of Tax by Creating a Philadelphia County Demolition Fund to Increase and Encourage Economic Development by Demolishing Bladed Properties Within the City, imposing a related fee for recorded documents and related items, and Making Technical Changes Under Certain Terms and Conditions. Bill Number 220410, Amending Section 191500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Waging Net Profits Tax by Revising Certain Tax Rates Under Certain Terms and Conditions. Bill Number 220411, Amending Section 191301 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Homestead Exclusion to Increase the Amount of the Homestead Exclusion Under Certain Terms and Conditions. Bill Number 220412, Amending Section 193900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Tax Exemptions for Longtime Owner Occupants of Residential Properties to Revise the Cap and Total Number of Exemptions Authorized Under the Program Under Certain Terms and Conditions. Bill Number 220413, Amending Section 191303 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Discounts and Additions to Tax by Tolling Additions, Interest, and Penalties on Real Estate Tax When the Assessed Value of a Property is Under Appeal and Limiting Tax Payments Due Based on Certain Assessments Under Appeals, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 220421, Amending Section 192900 of Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Senior Citizen Low-Income Special Tax Provisions by Extending the Deadline for Low-Income Seniors to Apply for Refund or Forgiveness of Real Estate Taxes Under Certain Terms and Conditions. Bill Number 220444, Amending Section 2500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Councilmanic Districts by Revising the Approximate Population in Each of the Councilmanic Districts to Include State and County Prisoner Data Under Certain Terms and Conditions. Bill Number 220455, Amending Section 191301 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Homestead Exclusion to Increase the Amount of the Homestead Exclusion Under Certain Terms and Conditions. Bill Number 220485, Amending Section 192600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipt Taxes with Respects to the Allocation and Apportionment of Income and Receipts and Outside of the City, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 220497, Amending Section 193900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Tax Exemptions for Longtime Owner Occupants of Residential Properties to Modify Parameters of Tax Exemptions for Longtime Residential Owner Occupants, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 220499, Amending Chapter 192900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Senior Citizen Low-Income Special Tax Provisions to Modify Parameters of Special Tax Provisions for Low-Income Seniors, including the Deadline for Filing an Application, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 220531, Amending Chapter 19300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Real Estate Taxes to Establish Rebates for Early Payments of Real Estate Taxes Under Certain Terms and Conditions. Resolution Number 220300, Resolution Providing for the Approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia a Revised Five-Year Financial Plan for the City of Philadelphia Covering Fiscal Years 2023 through 2027 and Incorporating Revised Changes with Respects to Fiscal Year 2022, which is to be submitted by the Mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority pursuant to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement authorized by an Ordinance of this Council approved by the Mayor on January 3, 1992, by and between the city and the authority. Resolution Number 220544, Confirming the Appointment of Sarah Ashley Andrews to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 220545, Confirming the Appointment of Chow Wing Lam to the Board of Education for the School District of Philadelphia.
Thank you. Councilmember Dom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to record it. If you excuse my business, if you can record it, yes, in favor of Bills Number 22044, 220544, and 220545. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Dom. Leave will be granted, and you will be recorded as voting in the affirmative for all of the legislative action taking place today. Today, we continue the public hearing of the Committee of the Whole to Consider the Bills read by the Clerk that constitute proposed operating and capital spending measures for fiscal year 2023, a capital program, and a forward-looking capital program for fiscal year 2023 through fiscal year 2028. Before we begin to hear testimony from the witnesses we have for today, everyone who has been invited to the meeting to testify should be aware that this public hearing is being recorded. Because the hearing is being recorded, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. By continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. Additionally, prior to recognizing members for questions or comments they have for witnesses, I will note for the record at this time that we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized in order to comply with the Sunshine Act. That chat feature must only be used for this purpose. Now, this morning, we will hear testimony from the proposed school board members. I would also like to note again that Finance Director Rob DeBo and Budget Director Marissa Waxman are available for questions for the administration bills which have been added to the Committee of the Whole. Mr. McDermott, can you let us know who the first people are to testify?
First person to testify is Sarah Ashley Andrews.
Good morning. Sarah, are you connected?
Yes, Madam Chair. Good morning.
Good morning. It's great to see you. Please state your name for the record, and feel free to proceed with your testimony.
My name is Sarah Ashley Andrews. Good morning, Council President Clark, Madam Chair, and members of City Council. My name is Sarah Ashley Andrews, and thank you for the opportunity to testify regarding my nomination to the Board of Education. I am a product of the Philadelphia Public School System. I attended General George A. McCall Elementary School from kindergarten to eighth grade. I am a graduate of WB Saul High School. I attended Bloomsburg University for two years. I hold a BA in Biblical Studies with a minor in Human Services from Lancaster Bible College. I hold a Master of Science degree in Counseling from The Lincoln University. As an advocate for Philadelphia schools for over 10 years, I deem it an honor and a privilege to have this opportunity to testify. Over the past 10 years, I have committed my life to exploring ways that I can make more of an impact on students throughout the city of Philadelphia. As the CEO and founder of Dare to Hope, a community activist, a mental health expert, and a child and family therapist, I am passionate about equipping students throughout the city of Philadelphia to gain access to the necessary tools needed to become self-sufficient leaders in the city of Philadelphia. As a result, I have successfully led my nonprofit organization Dare to Hope for over eight years. During that time, our organization has had the ability to impact over 5,000 students both locally and nationally. Dare to Hope has served as a pillar of support for over three years in several at-risk schools throughout the city. Additionally, I have worked to provide resources to children, parents, and extended families. My commitment and dedication to inspiring others has afforded me the opportunity to participate in various meetings with community leaders throughout the city and listen to students from across the city of Philadelphia. No matter which meeting I attend, all of the students share a similar theme: advocacy. These students express their desire for true advocates who truly understand where they come from. I listen to students who had the desire to become successful, however, needed help applying the correct tools to get there. I listen to students indicate that the condition of their schools and the lack of resources had a direct effect on the quality of their education. I listen to students who do not understand why their education did not hold the same value as their peers in suburban districts. I wake up every day with a desire to help people, not just people, but especially those who sit at intersections where they are ignored and marginalized because their complex and layered identities give no framework for their existence. For over 10 years, I have been committed to giving the students of Philadelphia a voice. I have been committed to educating those same students about their mental wellness. I have stressed to them the importance of pursuing higher education. More than that, I have committed to inspiring them to greatness, reminding the students that they can be anything that they want to be, and giving them the tools, mentorship, and connecting them to the resources to do so. I will end my testimony with this quote, which sums up who I am as a person. "The most important thing is to try and inspire people so that they can be great at whatever they want to do." Kobe Bryant. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. I'm sure there'll be some comments and questions. Councilmember Jones was glowing when you said "saw." Mr. McDermott, the next witness?
Our next witness is Chow Wing Lam.
Chow Wing Lam, are you connected? Okay, I can see you. Just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of City Council. My name is Chow Wing Lam. I am pleased and honored to provide this testimony as a nominee to the Philadelphia Board of Education. I have long believed that public education is the greatest investment we can make for our children and for our city. Research has consistently shown high school completion and college access to be linked with statistically improved life outcomes. Cities with educated and engaged citizenry have more vibrant and productive economies, richer and more diverse amenities, and less crime. When I was six years old, my family traveled over 8,000 miles to seek a better life. We landed in New Jersey, and while it took some time for our lives to get better, there are elements of the American dream that are very much alive within me through public education. Whereas I once lived below the federal poverty level, uncertain of my next home, relying on food stamps, and not even daring to voice my dreams, my circumstances eventually did change. The comfort and security I experience today, and that I'm even sitting here before you today as a nominee for the Board of Education, is owed largely to the adults in my life who, much like the teachers and leaders in our system, refuse to settle for anything less for the kids they serve. And while the aspirational journey within my story is not uncommon, paths like mine depend too much on circumstances kids do not have a choice or say in. I seek to serve on the Board of Education out of an earnest desire to provide all kids with the best possible shot we can offer to the life they dream and deserve. I believe my experience and perspective as a former member of district administration, in system-level change management, in financial analysis and oversight, as an educator and as a parent, provide valuable lens to help broaden and deepen the perspectives from which the full board may operate and view our work through. I am incredibly excited to work with and among our current and future board members, with Superintendent Watlington, and in conjunction with the Mayor's Office and with City Council in our shared service to Philadelphia. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you so very much, Chow Wing Lam, for your testimony. And I just want to say for the record, listening to both you and Sarah speak this morning, you have affirmed for us that there is nothing more powerful than bringing your lived life experience and applying it to whatever role it is that you are actively engaged in. There is no research that can be prioritized ahead of what you know because you've lived it. So I just want to say a special thank you to each of you. And Councilmember Jones, while you were smiling when you heard "Saul" come up, I was smiling when I heard her say "The." Did you hear her say "The" Lincoln University? And I said, "Look at this mighty lioness in action." Chair wants to recognize any members of the committee who have questions, and the Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. Yes, I was beaming with pride to know that Ms. Andrews came from Saul, but I was also taken aback because her comments reminded me of another Lincoln alum giving a speech way back in the day. Charismatic young lady that went on to become a state rep and a majority leader in city councils. You keep on doing what you're doing, and I'm thankful that you're reinvesting that lived experience that the majority leader talked about, and giving it, paying it forward to other young people who want to have an education that is valued in society. So, thank you for your contribution.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Councilmember Jones. Chair recognizes Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank both of these candidates for their willingness to serve on the Board of Education. Those of you who know the struggle to bring local control to the school board and how important it was for the city of Philadelphia know that this service is quite complicated, quite challenging, and quite time-consuming. So, I am just very grateful that you are willing to provide this kind of service and dedicate this amount of time, the amount of time necessary for this Board of Education. And so, you know, on behalf of the Committee on Education, I know this is like last minute. We're trying to get you guys through before the end of the year. Normally, we would have loved to have done a briefing with you to have an opportunity to talk to you a little bit around policy and some of the issues that you will be confronting. So, very quickly, just want to ask each one of you, when you look at your service in the Board of Education, and I think the Madam Chair talked a little bit around this, what is the perspective that you bring that you think is more vital right now? And what is the mark that you want to make, the contribution that you feel you will make to this school district? Thank you very much.
I'll go first. As a therapist, I bring a sense of being able to listen, right? I was asked in the interview process, you know, what would I do when people come and want to ask questions and want to give their opinions? Everybody matters, right? So, everybody deserves to be listened to. And I think I bring a unique set of skills that I was taught, you know, in grad school, to be able to actively listen, and not just listen for words, but, you know, nonverbal communication and all those things. So, I think I bring that set of tools as well. And can you repeat the second part of your question for me, please?
What is one of the challenges you really want to take on as, you know, your contribution? You guys have subcommittees. Where is the space where you think your voice is going to be the best in your advocacy work?
I believe it's going to take place in education equity. I'm a firm believer that zip code should not determine the quality of education you receive, that, you know, every child, and no matter what zip code, should get the same quality of education, the same partnerships with different organizations so that they can have the best schools as well. There should be no bad school and good school in Philadelphia. Every school should be the best school. So, I think that I will bring the education equity piece. That's something that I firmly believe in.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez, for these great questions. The experience that I believe... So, first of all, I am tremendously honored to be considered as a member of the board with the diversity of perspectives and experience that we currently have, and with the talents that Ms. Andrews brings as well. The perspective that I believe that is vital as an organization and as a system as large as we are is to be able to both understand what it is to live through and with trauma, and to make system-level decisions that impact everyone and each one at the same time. And I believe I do have that experience. In terms of the challenges that I am looking forward to most immediately is the very large change that is happening within our district with the new superintendent. And I also echo Ms. Andrews' statement of equity being hugely important. In terms of where you grow up, in terms of where you come from, who you were born to, there are so many ways in which equity impacts the lives of our children, and we can't let go of that lens.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I want to welcome both of the members and look forward to working together. We believe in City Council very strongly that the schools serve, and we learned during COVID, we're incredible anchors in our communities. So, from opening up school buildings in the summer and the evenings, to looking at educational equity, language equity, right, cultural inclusion, all of those issues, we look forward to working with you on that. Because I think as we talk about quality education, we can't talk about that without the language access, without the cultural inclusion, and without the equity discussions. I'm happy that both of you are going to center your work in that space, and welcome, ladies. Thank you so very much for your service.
Thank you to our Education Committee Chairperson, Councilmember Sanchez, for that. I do not see any additional members. Yes, Chair recognizes... Johnson.
Hey, good morning, Madam Chair. First and foremost, I want to congratulate both of you on your nomination for being school board members. And I like your focus around educational equity, particularly Sarah, when you talked about every young person should receive a quality education regardless of their zip code and/or neighborhood, which is critically important to all of our young people, receiving a quality education. And so, I have a question around, a very complex issue that we always have to address as relates to educational equity here in the city of Philadelphia. In the school district, currently right now, there's an internal investigation to look at the disparities in charter renewals for African-American-led charter schools. And so, can you give me, both of you, your perspective on how you view the roles of charter schools within the context of working within our educational system? A lot of times, there's a view that they're two separate systems, but to all of my constituents, all of those children are all of our children. The highest level of shootings and homicides for young people, teenagers, are particularly amongst young people who attend charter schools that are throughout the city of Philadelphia, who are represented by all council members. And so, I just want to get your perspective on how y'all will address social equity through the lens of making sure that all of the young people receive a quality education rather than the charter school system, which is still managed under the district through the Office of Charter Schools, as well as young people are also attending traditional public schools. And then also, Ms. Chow, can you also give me your background in terms of educational background and work background?
So, Sarah or Chow, whichever one of you want to go first? Whomever can get off of mute the quickest is fine.
I'll go first. I think, to answer your question, Councilman, can y'all, Johnson, is that, I think the first thing is that you have to show up, right? We can hear a lot of things going on in charter schools or our public schools, but if we're not there to actually see it, right, if we're not there to have conversations with students, with parents, with teachers, with other community leaders who are in, who are, you know, within their school system or their school community or their family, we won't know, right? We can say anything that we want to from like looking outside, but we have to get into it to see what was really going on. So, that would be my first answer to you, is that you have to show up, right? That shows that you care, showing up. The second piece would be that, you know, if we see something, we need to say something, right? If we see something is not right, you know, we need to speak up. And I'm a firm believer that, and even if it is right, right, we need to speak. I'm going to say, "Maybe we should model this." So, I'm a firm believer in using my voice. I'm not afraid to use my voice when I see things being good or bad, and to speak up when necessary. So, I think the first thing is to show up, and then I think the next step would be for me to actually speak up and say, you know, what I feel or what we've seen when we do these visits.
I'm here.
Thank you, Councilmember. And for the record, my preferred name is Chow Wing. I hear you. Your statement, "All of their children are all of our children," that flows through my body and is so true in everything that I do. I think in terms of the investigations on the renewals, I frankly don't have enough intimate knowledge about that investigation to provide an opinion. But what I will say is that in the experience that I had as part of charter authorizations for the state, things that I looked at and were important to me were along the lines of financial viability and conflicts of interest, and the thoughtfulness of the plans that are being put forward. All of those things matter in terms of operating a school that serves children, and all of those things are important to examine when we make decisions as to whether to grant charters. Now, in terms of my work background, I started my career as a teacher. I taught abroad, and I worked advancing cultural exchange for a number of years before deciding that I wanted to go to grad school for social policy. While I went to grad school, I worked first at the Warren School of Business, managing their global immersion program, and then at the Penn Institute for Urban um managing their global immersion program and then at the Penn Institute for Urban Research. Um, the examination of what happens in cities, why it happens, what leads to it, uh, how we can make it better has been a part of my career ever since then. I more recently uh worked at Public Financial Management. Um, currently, for six years in the school district, uh in the superintendent's office and also in research evaluation um in the Office of Evaluation, Research and Accountability. Um, and then currently uh at the Philadelphia Academy of School Leaders, um, which has a focus in uh school leadership.
Well, first and foremost, um very, very thoughtful responses from both of you, uh, which I think is great. And then last, last question. Um, and I like I like the energy that y'all are also bringing um to the table. In terms of just academic achievement, right? Every year, we are very, very supportive in making sure, since I've been a councilperson, that we have provided significant funding um to the school district, school district, school district of Philadelphia during every budgetary season consistently from day one. Um, give me an idea from both of you in terms of academic achievement, uh, your expectations for the district, the new superintendent as uh new board members. I think our academic achievement rate is somewhere around twenty-two percent um across the board. And so what what are your two visions as it relates to um taking our young people to the next level in terms of expectations for academic achievement for Black and Brown children that attend our Philadelphia public school system?
I know that we've been going in order, but I'll just jump in here really quickly. My expectations for academic achievement for Black and Brown children are no different than my expectations for academic achievement for all. I do, I do think that there are ways in which certain practices may preference certain children over others, and those are to be examined and analyzed um to understand whether there are disparities in how we are approaching, how.
Can you elaborate it? Can you elaborate, Ms. Chow, on the practices that you see in your mind?
Well.
Believe could be addressed?
Let's take um discipline, for example. Um, when kindergarten children are suspended at disproportionate rates based on their race, I think that it draws attention to uh to something that is not about the children, but about how do we see the things that we are deciding to discipline? And how do we remedy the things that we are deciding to discipline?
And Sarah?
Well, I can answer the question this way. The blueprint is set, right? There are guardrails, goals and goals and guardrails in place, right? For academic achievement, for for all these, for the for the three goals and the guardrails, right? So my thing would be to hold accountable, right? If this is what we say we're going to do, then let's hold, let's hold each other accountable to this. If we want, um, I believe is somewhere around fifty-six percent by a certain year, and and, you know, we want this percentage, what are we going to do? What work are we going to do to make sure that this gets done, right? When you think about the Black and Brown children and to and to Chow, Ms. Chowwin's point, yes, every child matters. But there are, we know that there are systemic things in place that hold Black and Brown children down. So, you know, how can we evaluate systems? How can we change systems? How can we get to the root cause of the issues? What is the root cause of suspensions? You know, why are these kids coming to school with these behaviors? Like, those are things that we need to identify and work at. So within those goals, I think they might be, there might be some subgoals that we can focus on to ensure that our children reach their academic achievement, reach the goals that we set, right? Um, as a therapist, I am, I'm a solution focused therapist. So I am committed to seeing the problem, identifying it in the present, and now how do we move forward? Yes, this might be the root cause, but we're here now, so how are we going to move forward? So I think I will bring that into as well. You know, getting to the root of these issues so that we can get to the bigger goal. There are subgoals within those bigger goals that we need to look at.
All right. My last, my last thing, I'm gonna leave y'all alone, but y'all, y'all are giving um great responses, very, very empowering responses, which makes me the more excited about the direction um that our board is going in with with you two members. Just last thing, just also taking consideration, another issue I'm very, very sensitive to. Uh, one is just increasing the level of African American men who are teaching within the Philadelphia public school system. It's an issue I paid attention to, um, introduced a resolution to some time ago. So I'm so I'm very, very sensitive to that issue. So hopefully, y'all can take that in consideration as a part of your mission when you talk about um social equity within the Philadelphia School District. And then the last thing is just making sure that in terms of professional services contracts and contracts in general, um, the Philadelphia School District does like billions of dollars in business, that we need to make sure that part of that process includes um people of color, um, particularly at the table when it comes to professional services contracts and in the in the building, in the building and development of the procurement process that's a part of Philadelphia School District. And so those are just my last two things, but um congratulations for being nominated. I will be voting for the both of you as well, and uh welcome aboard and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much, uh Councilmember uh Johnson. Uh, colleagues, are there any other uh questions or comments from members of the committee uh for these two witnesses today? Hearing none, um, I want to say a special. Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Yeah, real quick, I was I was gonna give them a real pass, but they're doing so well, right? That I would just, not a question, but would you put a bookmarker in? So as a as a member of the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, uh, we are looking at the issue of school to prison pipelines. School to prison pipelines. And what 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 that means is that if you look at the bottom performing schools, it come from eleven zip codes out of forty-eight in the city of Philadelphia. Eleven of the forty-eight zip codes are underperforming in the schools. Out of those same zip codes, they produce the highest populations of incarcerated individuals up on State Road. Please put a bookmarker to pay attention to that. I was told by uh former Mayor Good that if we reduce the failure rate in those same schools, we will reduce the crime rate later on. So I don't need you to answer that right now, but I want that on your radar when you go to work. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and congratulations.
Thank you uh so very much, uh Counciluh Member Jones. Um, important uh for these two uh uh new members um of the board after we get through this process to keep that on their radar. And thanks for connecting that data, that research to long term uh outcomes. Um, are there, because I cannot see um if anyone has their hands raised. I want to just ask again, are there any additional questions or comments from members of the committee uh for these two uh witnesses? Uh, hearing none, I want to thank you both so very much uh for being uh here today. And Mr. McDermott, uh, do we have any other witnesses to testify?
Uh, we do not have any other witnesses to testify. Uh, but as as you had mentioned earlier in the script, we do have Rob DeBeau and Marissa Waxman available for questions, but they do not have a testimony.
Thank you so very much. With that being said, I want to ask members of the committee, are there any questions or comments from members of the committee uh for the administration about any of the legislation before us? The chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I want to know from uh Mr. DeBeau and the administration. Early on in the budget process, we talked about reaching out to the state to look at complementary funding, complementary programming that would deal with some of the priorities that the city of Philadelphia had, whether we were talking about major infrastructure repair, whether we were talking about um gun violence uh and its many complex aspects. But the question I have for you is, how much progress have we made pairing some of our priorities to that five billion dollar surplus at the state level?
Yeah, so I can tell you that we have ongoing, we in our lobby, we have ongoing discussions with the state. I think we probably won't really know how that plays out till they adopt their budget later in the month. And I think we'll probably, as always, get caught up with, you know, larger state issues. But we are, we are pushing those items.
If I could take a deeper dive, push back a little bit. So when we start talking about the major infrastructure money that's coming down and some of our priorities, it might be anything from potholes to bridges. Have you worked with PennDOT to talk about where there is complementary pairing? In my case, in the fourth councilmatic district, how can we start with feasibility studies that might talk about a third crossing of the school hill to ease traffic concerns uh in Roxboro, Manayunk, East Falls? Has there been that type of discussion?
So I think um people from our Otis, our Office of Transportation and Structure, have been having those types of conversations, and they would be better able to answer those questions than I would and what what progress they've made.
Okay, um, when it comes to anti-violence efforts, uh, it's my understanding as Senator Hughes put some money on the table to uh go to boots-on-the-ground organizations and offered more to kind of top off whatever shortfalls we might have. Are there any specific pairings of those kinds of priorities with the state?
So I know, again, those conversations have been going on. I don't think there's anything in hand now, but that's probably something the MDO is probably better equipped to answer, and we'll make sure they they get you something.
All right, so I'm not going to go department by department, but it is my then expectation that we should not have any funding problems because we're on it in a way that, you know, they they literally, Senator Williamson, Senator Hughes, point blank said, that we don't ask them for enough. And I think it's just imperative that we not allow that to be a a deterrent from getting funds to do the things that we need. So I will be looking, if you could provide to the chair those specific kinds of cases where we have, I mean, I have an example. I believe that we have a deficit. I know Member Gudier shares this concern about streetlights. I have alleys that are point blank dark. I have driveways that are point blank dark. I recommended three million dollars to put into alley driveways um and driveways. They are fifteen thousand dollars per new pole. We recommended somewhere around of a hundred poles. I need specific answers and connect the dots to those kinds of things because if we go through the year and then I asked about it and we say, well, we don't have enough money, then I will be drawn back to this conversation. It says it was offered, it was offered by the state.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you uh so very much, Councilmember Jones. Um, leveraging.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Sure, every dollar that we can get is important. Chair recognizes Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you, Mr. DeBeau. I just have a quick question. Um, um, I think I have this information, but I just want to confirm. Um, the final numbers for the fourth quarter, um, we will have that information probably by, is that September?
Our um annual financial report, which includes those numbers, comes at the end of October.
End of October, kind of September, October, okay?
Yeah.
And do you receive projections from IHS Market prior to that will give you indication what the fourth quarter numbers may be?
Uh, so we're in constant conversations with IHS and actually, Ms. Waxman probably talk about that in more detail because she's the point of contact for them. But those numbers will be, you know, partly based on what we see on the revenue side, but also what we see on the expenditure side. Uh, so we will next update that, those numbers when we put out our quarterly report for the fourth quarter, and that will come out in mid-August. So that'd be the next update to our.
Right, so, but but since you talk with them on a regular basis, you don't get any indication of what um numbers will be prior to you putting the information out publicly?
So the the fourth quarter numbers are actually really based what's going on now. For IHS, we're really looking for help with his his projections. So, you know, we're in mid-June, essentially, right? So we would really be looking mostly at actuals now to figure out what was going on. Um, so that's.
You're looking at actuals, but you also have projections of what the fourth quarter may be?
Yeah, the fourth quarter ends in three weeks.
Right, so what are your, what are your projections for what our fund balance numbers may be for the fourth quarter?
Yeah, um, we put out a quarterly report in mid-May that had the new fund balance number. Um, I think you need one second to to pull that up unless, Mercy, you have that off the top of your head.
See who can do it faster.
If I remember correctly, um, that information will show that the fund balance will increase by a hundred fifty-five million dollars by the end of.
That is correct.
Of the fiscal year, basically, your predictions.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember uh Green. Chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson.
Oh, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Um, just had a question from Mr. Rob DeBeau. Rob, in terms of the administration's proposal regarding wage tax relief.
Yeah.
Can you give me the actual number that was proposed for wage tax relief? And then also have the administration propose in terms of this upcoming budget as well additional revenue from the property tax assessments for the school district of Philadelphia? Was that part of your proposal as well?
So first question on the wage tax, um, we had a two-year reduction um that would reduce the rate to from three point eight three roughly now to three point seven percent. So that that was our proposal.
How much, how much, how much is that in dollar savings? If you can clarify, please.
Yeah, for over the five-year plan, it's a million.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And the second part regarding the district, was that part of your proposal as well?
So we didn't have a specific proposal on the district, but the increased assessments would increase revenue for for the school district.
Okay, do you have, do you have the particular amount?
I can give you um a five-year, do a quick calculation of the five-year amount and what that would mean for them. Hold on one second, just take me a second, and I'll get that for you. You go over five years, it would mean about five hundred fifty million dollars for the school district.
Five hundred fifty-five million?
About five hundred and fifty million roughly.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Mr. DeBeau.
Sure.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember uh Johnson. Uh, and for the record, um, I want to acknowledge the presence of uh Councilmember uh Gautier. Um, are there any other uh questions or comments from members of the committee for uh this witness? We have both Marissa uh and Rob. I know some people don't have uh access to type in the chat or to put their hand up. So I just want to make sure that we're giving you um an opportunity to ask any questions. Okay, um, hearing none, uh, Rob DeBeau, um, just a a firm for us that would you Okay, um, hearing none, uh, Rob DeBeau, um, just a, a firm for us that would you, would you state for the record that in terms of your quarter three, uh, projections, that they are sometimes likely to be some of our most conservative projections throughout the year? And that our, uh, fund balance, that, um, it is, it is possible, um, and or even likely, um, that it will be even higher when we end the fiscal year? I think that's what we want to get on the record today. Do you have any, um, like a formal comment or response to that that you could put on?
Yeah, so usually what we do with the third quarter is, um, leave it fairly consistent with what we had, um, in our, in our five-year plan. This year, we actually took it up, which is why you're seeing the increased fund balance of 155 million. We did that, um, in large part because of the, the strength of the transfer tax, which has, you know, been um, phenomenal so far this year, but we think a lot of that is one-time. So we, we think that there's a one-time hit that probably, you know, won't, won't recur there. Um, that said, um, the year's not over, um, and if the numbers will be updated, um, and it's definitely possible they'll be higher. I don't think there's any guarantee either way, but that's definitely a possibility.
Thank you, thank you so very much, Mr. DeBeau, for putting that on the record for us. Chair recognizes Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. DeBeau, I just have one more question. Can you state a year, um, during your tenure in this role with the Kennedy administration or previous, um, years with the Nutter or Street administration? A year that you can recall where the, um, projected revenue, um, was less than the actual revenue, um, for the year?
Yeah, that happened, um, back, you know, 2008, 2009, happened in 2020. So it happens in years where the economy turns down.
It happened, okay, um, well, I have some data that challenges 2020, but, like, I'm sorry.
I think you said, well, I think your question was when revenue is lower than, than our projections. And that year, during the course of the year, revenues turned down substantially in that last quarter.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Green. And again, going once, going twice. Are there any other questions or comments from members of the committee, uh, for this witness? There being none, um, Mr. McDermott, do we have anyone else, uh, to testify today before we move into our public meeting?
We do not.
Okay, uh, thank you. We will now convene the public meeting. Mr. McDermott, will you please, uh, call the role to take attendance? Members that are in attendance will please indicate that you are present when your name is called. Also, please say a few brief words when responding so that your image will be displayed on screen when you speak. And we will note for the record, uh, that Council, uh, Member Dom, um, has requested to be, uh, listed as voting aye. Yes, Councilmember Jones.
My apologies, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, just say a few brief words, uh, when you're responding so that your image will be displayed on screen, um, when you, uh, speak. Uh, thank you. We will now go into, uh, our public meeting after Mr. McDermott has called the role.
Councilmember Bass?
Good morning, I am still present, thank you.
Councilmember Brooks?
Present.
Councilmember Dom is not present. Councilmember Gautier?
Present.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson? Councilmember Green?
Present.
Councilmember Gim? Councilmember Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Present.
Councilmember O'Neil? Councilmember O? Councilmember Quinones Sanchez?
I'm present.
Councilmember Squilla?
Oh, you got, you were, can you?
Jeez, I think I missed a vote.
Councilmember O'Neil is present. Uh, Councilmember Squilla?
I'm present, I'm present.
Councilmember O'Neil is present. Councilmember Squilla? Councilmember Thomas? And Councilmember Parker?
Uh, present, thank you. Um, now the chair will recognize Councilmember Jones for a motion on bill number 220444.
Thank you, Ma- Madam Chair. I move that bill number 204444 be approved and that, uh, that from, oh, excuse me, from this committee with a favorable recommendation and further move that the rules of council be suspended to allow this bill to be read at our next session of council.
Second.
The chair notes for the record that Councilmember Johnson has seconded that motion. It has been moved and properly seconded that bill number 220444 be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation. And further move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the first reading of this bill at the next session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it and that motion carries. Uh, the chair again turns to Councilmember Jones for a motion on resolution number 220544.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. I move that resolution number 220544 be moved from this committee with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
The chair notes for the record that Councilmember Johnson seconds that motion. It has been moved and properly seconded that resolution number 220544 be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it and that motion carries. Um, we'll now recognize, uh, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Jones for a motion on resolution number 220545.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. I move that resolution number 220545 be moved from this committee with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
The chair notes for the record that Councilmember Bass seconds the motion. It has been moved and properly seconded that resolution number 220545 be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it and, uh, that motion, uh, carries. Um, on the remaining bills, the chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion, uh, that the public hearing and meeting on the remaining bills before the committee today be recessed until, uh, June 14th, uh, 2022 at 4:00 PM.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Second.
The chair notes for the record that Councilmember O seconds that motion. It has been moved and properly seconded that the public hearing and meeting on the remaining bills before the committee today be recessed until Tuesday, June 14th at 4:00 PM. All those in favor of that motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, that motion carries. And this concludes the business today before the committee of the whole. Special thanks to all of our colleagues, the staff, and the viewing public. Thank you so very much for your participation. Have a good day.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.